It's a board meeting. It's a business meeting and the public may submit comments in writing to BOE at WCPS.k12.md.us and the comments will be distributed to all board members. I call this meeting to order now and declare a quorum. If you would stand with us for the pledge in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let everything that we say and do tonight glorify you and be the very best possible preparation for our students. You may be seated. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Agenda stands. We have several minutes.
Yes. I motion to approve the work session minutes dated May 6, 2025.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the closed session open portion minutes dated May 6, 2025.
Second? Second. All those in favor?
I make a motion to approve the closed session minutes dated May 6, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I make a motion to approve the closed session open portion minutes dated May 20, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I make a motion to approve the closed session minutes dated May 20, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
And I make a motion to approve the business meeting minutes dated May 20, 2025.
Second.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. We don't have any old business that we're moving to new business with our consent agenda. Scott.
Good evening, President Zetmyer, members of the Board, Dr. Sevigny. Tonight, today I have six, again, today I have nine items to review. The person who reviewed these items and they are being recommended for approval.
And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are we putting them up on the screen? The consent agenda items? Thank you. I appreciate that.
Dr. Zetmyer, I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements as presented in the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion?
I have a question. So how old are the school buses that we are going to be selling? The 20?
So Mr. Johnson's here. I believe 12 years old, but I'll let him, let him give a more definitive answer than I believe.
Sure. It'll be a combination of buses that we held over this year into its 13th year and also a combination of some of the 12-year buses that are naturally going out of cycle.
And are we going to be okay with the number of buses we have since we're only getting eight new ones? We're getting rid of 20 and getting eight?
Yes. So keep in mind, those are buses that we will order after July 1st. So really, this is an issue that's going to come around for fiscal '27. But we will, we will have to look at our existing fleet and probably extend into 12, 13, or extend into 13th, 14th year in order to accommodate that, yes.
Any other questions?
And this also is-
Mr. Evans?
This also is for up to 20. So it doesn't mean we're getting rid of 20.
I was just going to say that. Right, right. This could be a crashed bus at some point. God forbid, we, hopefully, we don't have any of those. But, you know, if we would have one that got in a wreck and needed to get rid of it, it would, you know, it could be for various reasons and it's up to 20.
Okay. And then the only other question I have, I think I see it there where some of these are renewals and like the heating oil is for three, the renewal is three of three and athletic training is two of four. That's how many renewals are left on the contract?
Correct. Yeah, we added that. I think Mr. Guesford, thank you. Ask about that the last one. So we added that as kind of a, you know, to let you know where we are in that renewal cycle.
Is there any other discussion or questions? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous one, Debbie. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next up is, in fact, I think it's going to be the Elisa Ram Hour. We want to go ahead and start with an approval of memorandum of understanding between us and this.
President Zetmyer, Dr. Sevigny, members of the Board. The Maryland Office of Legislative Audits recommended in its most recent audit that the Board of Education have memorandum of understanding or agreements with our various foundations such as Barbara Ingram Foundation or the Education Foundation that really delineates the rules and responsibilities for each entity. The MOU currently before the Board of Education for consideration this afternoon was drafted in response to that audit recommendation. It just codifies the existing arrangement we already have in place. It's nothing new for us. The Board Directors of the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation approved the MOU on June 5, 2025, and staff is now seeking the Board of Education's approval.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To any discussion? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous.
I always thank, thank you to the foundation for all they do for the school.
Much like the previous motion before you, this, this MOU in front of you is with the Education Foundation, similar, was a result of the legislative audit. There is nothing new that we weren't already doing with the Education Foundation or that they weren't already providing to us. This just codifies it. The Board Directors for the Education Foundation approved the MOU on June 9, and the staff is now seeking the Board of Education's approval of this MOU.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Public Schools Educational Foundation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? We'll move to the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The parties entered, well, this is a, we have a public-private partnership with the Smithburg Athletic Booster Club, and the parties entered into a memorandum of understanding on February 25, 2019 to establish their respective obligations with regard to renovation of the stadium facilities at Smithburg High School to include a new team room, concession stand, trainer referee locker room, increased storage facility, and a ticket office. This fourth amendment to the MOU between the BOE and the Smithburg Athletic Booster Club will extend the MOU terms through August 15, 2030. They need more time to accomplish what we agreed to previously in the MOU.
Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Smithburg Athletic Booster Club, public-private partnership to extend the terms of the MOU through August 15, 2030.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Who made the second?
Charlie.
Linda? Any discussion? We'll move to the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. You're still up.
You know, I'm covering for Mr. Prue tonight as well, so I've got a lot. At the last board meeting, the Board approved a memorandum of understanding between the town of Boonsborough and ourselves regarding the disposition of real property on the Boonsborough campus. So tonight, the staff is seeking approval, this afternoon, sorry, is seeking approval to surplus and convey plus or minus 1.6 acres of real property on the Boonsborough High School campus to the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County to facilitate the reconfiguration of Campus Drive. Upon declaration of the property being surplus, the Board of Education still must secure the approval of the Maryland Interagency Commission on School Construction, and then pending the approval, the IAC, the Board will transfer that property to the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County as required by law for the eventual transfer to the town of Boonsborough. We're seeking approval of the surplus of that property tonight.
Do I have a motion?
President Zetmyer, I move to approve the resolution declaring approximately 1.6 acres of certain real property located on Campus Drive as surplus property.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? That's unusual. All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you.
The Policy Committee reviewed proposed changes to policy KD at its public work sessions on August 8, September 20, and October 31, 2024, and then again on February 12 and March 18 of 2025. The committee recommended, and the Board of Education approved, a first reading of proposed changes at the Board's March 19, 2025 business meeting. The committee received comments from the public on the proposed changes after the first reading and reviewed those comments at its public work session on April 9. The committee discussed further changes to the policy at its April 9 and June 11 public work sessions. The additional changes to the policy include requiring speakers to sign up to speak prior to the start of public comment and limiting the total number of speakers to 15 and their time to four minutes. Due to the amount of time that has passed since the first reading in March, it is necessary to conduct another first reading of the proposed changes. Therefore, the Policy Committee is recommending the Board of Education approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy KD.
Do I have a motion?
President Zetmyer, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy KD entitled "Opportunity for Public Comment at Board Business Meetings, Town Meetings, and Public Hearings in the Procedures Governing Such Proceedings."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do I have any discussion?
Absolutely. Under 3C, where it says "public comment," it used to say "will," that was changed to[764.82][764.82]"may," follow the approval of minutes. So I'm confused as, are we changing will or may we approve the minutes before we have public comment? So that, I don't understand why that was changed.
It can be changed by the Agenda Committee, and so the change allows the Agenda Committee a little bit of leeway in how the agenda is planned.
Okay. So you're saying, is that, so is that saying that might not have any public comment at all?
No, public comment will occur. It's just, it will occur when the Agenda Committee has placed it on the agenda.
Okay. And then it says, Washington County Public Schools-
Where are you now?
Same, same paragraph. Educ, educational environment, student well-being, and school operations. Comments that fall outside these parameters, including personnel or student matters, which clearly identify an individual, individual or individuals, will be deemed inappropriate and redirected to the, to be addressed in a different forum by EG, by Human Resources. What I'm wondering is, does that say that we people cannot come and talk about board actions or policy comments?
You know what? I'm sorry. I took your spot in answering the question. Go ahead.
Any member of the Policy Committee can certainly answer those questions.
Sorry.
But if you'd like me to answer, I certainly can. Board actions or actions the Board takes at a public meeting is public discussion, which falls outside of personnel or student matters because the Board would not and should not be discussing personnel or student matters that clearly identify an individual or individuals in a public session.
And they've always had that.
Correct. So this does not preclude individuals from having the ability to comment on publicly taken actions by the Board.
Just personnel?
Personnel, student matters, other actions before, appeals before the Board.
And that's never, that hasn't changed.
That, no.
That's all the same.
It was reworded to, it was tweaked a bit, but it hasn't changed. It's the same as it has been.
So you can still discuss policies and things like that?
Correct.
Even though it doesn't say in here?
That just says what you cannot discuss.
Mr. Evans is correct.
Okay. Alrighty.
I would just like to say-
The Chair recognizes Mrs. McCusker.
Okay. I would just like to say I don't agree with limiting the number to 15 speakers. I know that there are certain times where there are things that happen in the community where you're going to get a big outcry, and I think that people should be heard if they're willing to come speak.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I think I was one of the only ones who did not vote for this the first reading, and my reason was because we had to sign up the night before or the day before. And as a busy mom, I don't know what tomorrow looks like for me, so I like that we have at least included the option to come and speak prior to public comment, or you can sign up while you get here. So I like that. I don't love, as Ashley said, the, the limit on people because I, if, if there is an issue and people want to speak, I don't want them to have to wait till the next time because there's a limit.
Any other discussion?
I'll just say that I, I personally asked for the limit because-
For what?
For the limit on the amount of speakers because we've, we've been in public comment for two, two and a half hours sometimes. And while I agree 100% with we want to hear from everybody, at some point, we all need to remember that we're human beings also. And when I have to sit in a five-hour meeting, at some point, I lose mental capacity and I feel like I lose my ability to, to grasp and understand some of the discussion that we're having before or after. So I, I think that this is a reasonable compromise to be able to go and limit the amount of speakers. Public comment can still be submitted in writing as well. All board members get that BOE email that, that Dr. Zetmyer presented in the beginning of the meeting, and when we have to go and sit through two, two and a half hours, I mean, we could go and leave it as that, but at some point, I lose my, my attention span of sitting there and listening to that, too. So at some point, it does lose its effectiveness for the people presenting as well, which I don't like to say that. I don't necessarily like to admit it, but it is the truth. So that, I think this gives us the ability to hear from many people still while still giving the public an opportunity to comment on issues at hand as well.
Thank you.
I would just say that I, I'm disappointed that we're doing away with the longstanding tradition, maybe is a good word, of not allowing people that show up that haven't signed up to come up and speak. I think that if somebody shows up and they may not, they may miss the opportunity to sign up, they shouldn't be prevented from speaking.
But that doesn't do-
I think this-
You have to sign up prior to public comments starting.
Yeah.
Right.
So you're saying-
So like if public comment starts at, at 5:00, you can sign up all the way up until 4:59.
But practice has been that if somebody's sitting in the-
Audience.
Audience wants to say something, maybe they heard something that jogged their memory of something, or, or they just feel on the spur of the moment, they'd like to come up and just say something. I think that kind of stifles that person's ability to say something.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? We'll move to the vote. All in favor? Did you get that? So the motion passes.
The Policy Committee reviewed policy IMDA at its public work session on April 9 and June 11, 2025. The committee is recommending changes to the policy that would update the title of the policy and the purpose statement to include the pledge, the flag. In addition, language was added to clarify that although the period of silent meditation is not intended to be a religious exercise or be identified as such, students and staff, staff and students may choose to voluntarily engage in such. The committee is recommending the Board of Education approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy IMDA.
I move to-
I have a motion.
I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy IMDA entitled Silent Meditation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? The Chair recognizes Mr. Guesford.
Just a clarification. So although we, I think it's law that we have to have the pledge, the pledge allegiance. What's the difference between participating? I mean, shouldn't we honor country flag that we have and at least stand? I mean, you don't have to say it if you don't, but where do we find that line there for?
So there's a difference between what the law requires and maybe what a philosophical belief is.
All right. Tell me.
And, and so the law requires us to have the pledge. The law does not require staff and students to participate in it. They cannot disrupt the process. So we cannot compel a staff or student to say the pledge and engage in it, but they cannot interfere or interrupt that process.
So is standing a part of that or not a part of that?
It's not a part of that, not under the way the law is written.
And that's, that's Maryland law?
Correct.
What's, what's the national law? Is there, is there a difference?
There's, the federal law doesn't speak-
Federal law?
Doesn't speak to-
Doesn't speak to-
Because different states have different requirements for the pledge. There are some states that allow school districts to waive the pledge altogether. Maryland is not one of those states.
Have we looked into the federal?
I, there is not a specific federal.
There is nothing.
Not for schools.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? I do want you to know that it's Maryland Article Section 7-104 and 105, which are the standards. The law is about this big, which is very unusual for a law, and it does require up to 60 seconds of a morning for students to say the pledge.
And we, that doesn't mean that we have to have a flag in every classroom?
There must be a flag in every classroom.
And there is. We did, after we discussed this in Policy Committee, we did ask facilities to check, and there is.
Yeah, that's 7105. 7104 is standing for the pledge.
Okay.
All right. We'll move to the, anybody else? We'll move to the vote. All in favor? Unanimous.
The Maryland State Department of Education adopted a pre-K through 3 comprehensive literacy policy that requires local boards of education to adopt a student promotion policy. Staff drafted changes to the Board of Education's current student promotion, acceleration, and retention policy in order to comply with the state requirement. Staff will also be drafting changes that comply with the state requirements to administrative regulation IKE-R, which sets forth the procedures on how the policy changes will be carried out. The proposed changes to policy IKE, which were also shared by staff with the Board of Education's Curriculum and Instruction Committee, were shared with the Policy Committee at its public work session on June 11, 2025. The committee concurred with the proposed changes to the policy. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy IKE.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the first reading of proposed change to policy IKE entitled Promotion, Acceleration, and Retention of Students.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McCusker. Any comments, questions? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. I like this. No movement, lots of information. Thank you.
My last agenda item for tonight, this afternoon. Yep, afternoon. So the Board has a policy BEE, which governs that the Board will hear appeals, and there's three different types of appeals. Student discipline, appeals of suspensions or dismissal of certificate staff, and other decisions of the superintendent. Each one of those three has its own administrative regulation. So the, the Policy Committee reviewed proposed changes to those regulations, BEE-R1, 2, and 3, and the accompanying exhibits at its public work session on June 11, 2025. Staff advised the committee of the Board of Education policy BEE, Ministry of Hearings and Appeals, requires the Board to adopt rules or procedure. Those current rules or procedure had not been updated in a number of years, and although the Board had complied with the law in practice, it hadn't updated the regulation to get, to reflect the changes in the law that the Board was already following. Because the administrative regulation, the form, the rules for procedures, they, these regulations fall under the Board's for approval, where normally regulations fall under the superintendent. But it is the Board's rule, so the Board has to approve these changes. There are, the need for the three different sets I already laid out for you is because there's three different types of appeals. And then the regulations are the forms that accompany that, the individuals fill out to request those specific appeals. The committee is recommending the Board of Education approve the proposed changes to administrative regulations BEE-R1, 2, and 3, and the accompanying regulations, exhibits, excuse me, BEE-E1, 2, and 3.
Okay, so that would require three motions. Do I have the first motion?
I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to administrative regulation BEE-R1 entitled Rules of Procedures in Appeals and Hearings, Section 7-305(c)(4) and Exhibit BEE-E1 entitled Appeal Information Form.
Do I have a second? Any comments, questions, Mr. Guesford?
I just have a question. Do we have any appeals that are in the process that they would kind of be on either side of this policy change?
Not at the moment, that are under the Board's jurisdiction.
Okay, so then-
There, there is one that may be under state board jurisdiction, but not local board.
So would be fine that if we changed this, that we're clear and we don't have to go back and look at the one previous if that was under, the appeal was under that one?
That's a really good question, Mr. Guesford. Correct. We wouldn't have to. That's why staff withheld recommending these changes until we had gone through the outstanding appeals we had, and that's when it was brought forth to the Policy Committee to avoid any issue like you're referencing right now.
Good. Okay.
Any other questions? Let's move to the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Deb. Motion number two?
I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to administrative regulation BEE-R2 entitled Rules of Procedure for Hearings, Section 6-202a2, and Exhibit BEEE-E2 entitled Hearing Information Form.
Second?
Second.
Do we have any questions on this motion? All in favor? Unanimous. Deb. And the final motion?
I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to administrative regulation BEE-R3 entitled Rules and Procedures in Appeals and Hearings, Section 4-205(c)(3), and Exhibit BEE-E3 entitled Appeal Information Form.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions? We'll move to the vote. All in favor? I'm sorry, I was waiting for Charlie, so I didn't see this end. Okay, it's a unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Next is the local application for federal funds. Dr. Brunson?
Good evening, President Zetmyer, board members, Superintendent Dr. Sevigny, and members of the community. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide a brief overview of the local application for federal funds, commonly referred to as the LAF grant, and its role in supporting special education services within our district for your approval. Each year, as a part of the federal funding process under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, school districts are required to submit a comprehensive application, which you should have a copy in front of you, to the Maryland State Department of Education. This annual application enables us to access federal IDEA funds that are vital for the delivery of special education and related services to eligible students birth to 21 across Washington County public schools. As we plan for FY '26, I want to provide the Board with a brief fiscal update. Based on our most recent child find count from October 2024, we are currently serving 388 children ages birth to kindergarten- through individualized family service plans and 2,955 students ages 3 to 21 with individualized education programs. This represents an increase of 113 students identified for special education services when you compare it to last year. Board members, as we look at the FY '26 allocation, I want to highlight an important funding consideration. For FY '26, Washington County Public Schools experienced a 3.4% increase in the number of students eligible for special education services. This increase reflects the continued growth in student needs across the district. However, despite this growth, our federal allocation was reduced somewhat by $164,048 when you compare it to FY '25. In short, we are tasked with serving more students with fewer federal dollars than we received in the past. Nonetheless, we remain fully committed to providing high-quality services and the best possible educational experiences for all of our students. The additional slides that I'll just display just basically shows you a visual display of what funding we did receive and how we have utilized those slides. So this one is for FY 2026. This is the year that we're going into. This is the previous year's amount, which was 2025, and the previous year before that, 2024. That concludes my presentation.
Do I have a motion?
This was disinformation.
To approve the.
There's something to approve.
President Zetmeyer, I move to approve the LAF grant 2025-2026 application and combined total allotment of 5,000, 5 million, sorry, I didn't see all the numbers. $5,944,143 as represented below.
Second.
Oh, any questions, discussion?
I, I had just a quick question, and I hope it's not a typo and I'm nitpicking. I just am asking, because my son's in birth to K and he's under 3, the, the slides said that the birth to K number was 388 children, 3 to 5. Should that be 0 to 5?
It should be birth to 5, yes.
I just didn't know if there was more students that weren't on here, because that's already a lot, so, okay.
Any other questions? Let's move to the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Brunson. Mr. Embly?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, President Zetmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Savine. Thank you for the opportunity to present the FY '26 Food and Nutrition Services Operating Budget. We'll start off with our annual recap. This year, we had very little growth in participation. We had slight increases in lunch, slight decreases in breakfast. In total, we served about 1.5 million breakfasts, 2.1 million lunches, and 177,000 after-school suppers. Reimbursement rates increased at the rates that they typically do. Some years they do, some years they don't. This year, we saw the normal CPI increases. As we reported last year, we had expected that the supply chain assistance that had been in place for a couple of years would be ending, and that did. We did not receive any additional funding this year. For FY '25, we added two community eligibility provisioned schools where all meals were free. That was for Fountain Rock Elementary and Potomac Heights Elementary. And of course, as everybody knows, all costs continue to increase, and that's something that we continue to see. And I'm proud to announce that we did spend the $1.4 million from our fund balance that was required as part of our spend-down plan. Part of that was our project at North High. We purchased a lot of new reach-in refrigerators, freezers, hot boxes, milk coolers. We did a full replacement of a lot of those items that we can't get parts for anymore or that were becoming a maintenance issue. Let's look ahead at FY '26 before I get into the numbers. We are looking at and closely monitoring everything from the federal level, since the majority of our funding comes from the federal level. We are expecting $195,000 decrease in our commodity allotment. However, as we had thought, some of the local foods grants were ending. We're hearing that some of those may still be in place, so we're closely monitoring all of the actions at the federal level and are prepared to adjust accordingly. When I met with the Finance Committee, I believe, in May, we had originally looked at adding four community eligibility schools. And we looked at the numbers, and we looked at opportunities, met with senior leadership, and are proposing adding 11 community eligibility provisioned schools that would give us 26 total schools where we would be able to serve free meals to all children. Just to give you an idea, the schools that we're looking to add had about $26,000 in charges that the county is going to have to absorb, that we would not have that problem next year at those schools. You know, principals spend a lot of time working with families, trying to get them to apply for free meals, or when they don't, and they accrue the debt. You know, we still feed the child per board policy, but collecting that debt is often quite a time encumbrance for principals. We are also planning another investment this year from our fund balance, and I'll walk through a little bit for the newer board members, our fund balance and our spend-down plan. We're looking at $500,000 for the upcoming school year. Just to give you some graphs on average daily participation, you'll see this with lunch as well. The big dip was during COVID. You know, we bounced back fairly well with breakfast and lunch. The, we're projecting 8,700 breakfasts next year. We're hoping to go up about 200 through some additional outreach. Lunch, same dip, same dip for COVID, same rebound. I will say lunch participation continues to increase slightly. We feel that with adding the community eligibility schools, that we're going to see some good increases in our participation. This will be the first time that we've had some secondary schools as part of our community eligibility program. Next is just pie charts showing where the revenue, main revenue sources are obviously from the federal level. For our breakfast and lunch program, you see we get about 83% of our total revenues from the federal level. Expenditures, most of the expenditure is in salary benefits and food costs. So we just wanted to share that in a pie chart. In your packets, you do have the full budget breakdown of all the categories. This chart we included a couple of years ago just to show that, you know, when, you know, Mr. Prue, the Chief Operating Officer, was in the Food Director role, there were many years prior to his leadership that they had not been investing in new equipment. You know, you should be, you should be investing several hundred thousand dollars every year of depreciation to keep up. And we had this very big bubble that we knew that was going to be a challenge. Fortunately, the one thing out of COVID, we got extra funding, and we've been able to take that and reinvest into the system. And we've had $3.8 million worth of investment back into the program. I feel really strongly about the state of the food and nutrition infrastructure. Again, the small investment that we're going to make this year, we are looking at a project where we have monitoring on all of our freezers. We will know exactly what time they would lose power, at what point the temperature is of those devices, continuing to invest in technology to make sure that we're prepared to handle those emergencies. So that's a $3.8 million. You can see in 10 years, we only invested almost 2 million. So in the, in the short four-year period, we've been able to catch up, again, mostly in part to a lot of additional funding. This slide, we wanted to show, you know, if you see in 2022, $4.269 million in additional funding to help keep the department solvent from the federal level. So they gave us the extra money, we're investing it. We can only carry three months' operating expenses in a fund balance. So at the end of next year, we will be below that level. You know, it's because we've been spending down, our monthly expenditures are slightly higher than they normally would be. We calculated that a $4 million fund balance, that's about 25% of our operating budget, is a comfortable fund balance for food and nutrition. Just to give you some context, prior to 2017, we had an $11.8 million budget with less than $1 million in our fund balance. So having that rainy day fund does allow us for, you know, a particular year like this one, where there is a larger potential for salary and benefit increases. It allows us to adjust to that. Our goal every year is to break even, and we've been able to do that. We are using that, that fund balance to spend down with those large equipment purchases. But this would be the last year of that spend-down plan, and then we can move forward accordingly. So that's what this chart shows here. Lastly, going into meal prices. So here is a chart showing where we are in comparison to Frederick. Allegheny County is community eligibility for their entire county. I do understand that Frederick County last week presented a 15-cent meal price increase, and they are actually expected to approve that next week. So this shows current prices for all of us. The next slide shows that we are asking for a 10-cent lunch price increase for next year. We would rather do smaller increases than wait and do a large increase all at one time later down the road. Since we are adding community eligibility schools, originally, when I met with the Finance Committee, we talked about a 10-cent meal price increase, gets you about $40,000 in revenue. It's not much at all, because most of our funding comes from the federal level. With the CEP changes, we're only looking at about $25,000. So it's a very, very small piece of the food and nutrition budget. However, we feel that if we don't raise the price a small increment, that potentially next year or the year after that, we would have a larger increase. And we feel that it would be better to present smaller increases slowly than to hit with a large increase all at one time. With that, that ends my presentation, seeking approval of this year's budget and can answer any questions you might have.
We'll have a motion, and then we'll ask questions. Do I have a motion for the approval of Food and Nutrition Services FY 2026 operating budget?
I move to approve the proposed FY '26 Food and Nutrition Services operating budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Now, does anybody have any questions?
I do. So I, can you explain a little bit more about what transitioning schools to being the CEP schools, what does that do? So where are we getting the funding for the, is that coming strictly from federal?
It does, it does. And it's really, you get a, it's a calculation based on the direct certifications, those folks that are receiving assistance. There's a formula that you have to have over certain percentage. It's a very complex formula, because at some point, you drop below 100% of your total reimbursement. So it is something that I worked directly with Mr. Prue and senior leadership on, looking at that. But absolutely, all the funding comes from the federal level.
Any other questions? Comments? Let's move to the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rollins and team.
Good afternoon, President Zetmeyer, Vice President Gessford, board members, and Dr. Savine. We're seeking the board's approval of the 2025 Educational Facilities Master Plan. Plan was presented to the board at its June 3 work session. Just a quick reminder of, that the plan provides, proposes five major projects, three elementary schools, replacement elementary schools, one elementary school addition, and a middle-high school replacement. And based on the plan, in the FY '27 capital improvement program, will include funding requests for the Downsville Pike Elementary School, which is being bid tomorrow. We're advertising bids tomorrow, so that's pretty exciting. The startup of the Jonathan Hager addition, which would include design costs and things like that, and three capital maintenance projects. So per the Code of Maryland Regulations, the board is required to approve a master plan each year, and then we have to get it to the state by July 1, which is why we're here today. And we're here to answer any questions the board might have, and again, seek your approval here tonight.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move the, for the approval of the 2025 Educational Facilities Master Plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussing questions for Mr. Rollins and team? Seeing now, we'll move to the vote. All in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Zetmeyer, Dr. Savine, and members of the board. I'm here with Emery Hines. She is the president of WCESP, and we're asking. Say, good afternoon. We're asking for approval of the negotiated agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the negotiated agreement dated July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2027, and the wages effective July 1, 2025.
I move, I move to approve the negotiated agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the negotiated agreement dated July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2027, and the wages effective July 1, 2025, and amended language detailed in the signed tentative agreements.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McCusker. Any questions, comments? Let's move to the vote. All in favor? Unanimously approved.
I also want to thank WCESP's leadership, Emery Hines, while Patty Felix is with us here. They're great to work with. Emery is retiring July 1 after a lot, a long service to WCPS and also leadership with WCESP. So we're sorry to see her go, but we're happy for her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
After working with us.
Thank you very much.
You're up.
Next we have, we're here, we're representing WC, well, you're representing WCASA, our administrators and supervisors. This is Dr. Rachel Kane Kirkpatrick. She is the president of WCASA. And we're here asking for approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators for salary.
Do I have a motion?
I move. Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators regarding salary as detailed in the signed tentative agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions for Mrs. Baker? We'll move to the vote. All in favor? Approved unanimously.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Razor. Dr. Brillo.
Good afternoon, President Zetmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Savine. I'm here to ask for your approval of the personnel actions dated Tuesday, June 17, as presented in closed session.
Do I have a motion?
I move to.
Go ahead, Linda. No, go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
I move to approve the personnel actions dated Tuesday, June 17, 2025, as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brillo. All right, now we come to the committee report. And I will start, we had a wonderful CNI committee meeting. Oh, let me do the future agenda items first. Anytime anybody has an agenda item they want to add, we will be glad to add it. The next July 15 meeting, we're going to focus on Connect Ed elementary programming, which brings us back to reports to the board, and I'll start. We met, Curriculum and Instruction met at Hancock Elementary. Thank you, Principal Shawna Gore. It was a wonderful time to learn about. It was a wonderful time to learn about a great school in our county. We also had an overview on HHT and the, started looking at the elementary grading policy. We looked at the retention policy, which we mentioned, and my favorite program in all of the county, the Tutor Apprentice Update. Our next meeting will be announced, but it will not be in July? Mr. Willow, Dr. Willow? Okay, thank you. Which brings us to facilities.
Facilities did not meet this month. We are preparing for receiving build bids of our Downsville, so we're very excited about that time with the, finally, it's gotten to the point now that we're going to see some progress. So I know that team is excited to look forward to those bids. And our next meeting will probably not happen until July, so.
Okay. Finance?
Finance Committee met on the 14th of May at 8:30, and we meet again on August the 12th at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you. Human Resources?
Human Resources will meet again on September 9 at 1 o'clock.
And Policy?
Yeah, Policy met last week, and in addition to the policies, you just saw another discussion we had was discussing student discipline. I forget what policy that is coded as, but we decided that the policy was good and that we should probably be updating the exhibit that addresses that policy. So I know staff is working on that, and we'll be seeing updates to that in the near future. And the next meeting will be Monday, July 7 at 8:45.
Not 8:46?
Not, oh wait, what did we say? It is 8:46, yeah.
All right. This brings us to public comment, and I need to read to you from KD. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Before I call individuals forward who would like to make comments this evening, I'd like to read from KD. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topics concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify the individual and individuals. Those wishing to address the board who do not sign up prior to the start of the meeting will be required to sign the log, ta-da, located at the speaker's table for the purpose of the minute, meeting's minutes. Each speaker may speak up to five minutes. A timer is used for each speaker. Once the speaker begins, a timer will be started, and a green light will be displayed when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining. In there a lot of time, a yellow light will be displayed. When the red light comes, you're done. And a tone will sound, let's not make the tone sound. At this time, I want to call our first speaker, Roger Stennerston.
Well, good afternoon, Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Savine, board members. I'm Roger Stennerston, I'm representing Rising to Learn, a grassroots organization. At the Policy Committee meeting on June 11, Policy JK Student Discipline was reviewed, as Mr. Evans indicated. According to notes taken by stakeholders and attendants, both Mr. Evans and Mr. Burkett voiced support for what they described as a more aggressive disciplinary action from the school system. It's my understanding Mr. Burkett expressed his belief in a three strikes and you're out approach, while Mr. Evans stated that if a student demonstrates they cannot be in the general population, we need to use online tools to provide those students with education. Coincidentally, this perspective seems to align with the current push to open able. As the board calls for increasingly strict measures, two important questions remain. When and how will the support side of the equation be addressed? To be clear, Rising to Learn agrees that students who consistently disrupt the classroom should not remain in that setting. Educators and students certainly deserve classrooms that are safe and focused on learning. However, simply removing a student who is dysregulated from the classroom does not resolve underlying issues, and this is where our concern lies. For example, if a student is acting out due to some trauma at home, sending them back into that environment as an alternative educational approach really does no good, in fact, compounds the problem. We're effectively placing them back in harm's way and expecting them to thrive academically. Students who misbehave because they're struggling with the content are unlikely to get meaningful assistance and support at home. Without robust interventions in place, we're not solving the issue, but we're delaying it, in fact, perhaps magnifying it when it comes out a little bit later. These students will return, their needs will be unmet, and perhaps, as I said, will have grown. Relocating a disruptive child to another room within the school, while sometimes necessary, is only a temporary fix if there are no meaningful supports provided. This approach comes with real resource demands, dedicated space, trained staff, ongoing management, and certainly you heard several meetings ago from your behavior resource folks indicating that. We do recognize that WCPS has invested in special programming and supports for students who do need more. As needs grow, so too, however, must our investment. Services must expand both in scale and accessibility if we hope to make a real difference. More trained professionals, more counseling access, more creative, individualized interventions that meet kids where they are. Behavioral challenges vary in severity and root cause. We ask please that you recognize the complexity of behavior. It is critical that the community and particularly, particularly parents understand how the elected board plans to respond to the wide spectrum of student needs. A more aggressive discipline policy must be matched with equally robust and compassionate support systems, or we risk creating more harm than good. Many students who display highly aggressive behaviors such as throwing chairs are clearly grappling with some deeper issues. These must be acknowledged and treated, not dismissed or outsourced to an in-home or distance learning model. Dr. Savine, Rising to Learn would like to respectfully request a breakdown of the different tiers of the 16,000 behavior referrals mentioned during the June 11 Policy Committee meeting. We'll communicate with you at another time to request that. It's vital to understand how many of these referrals fall into Tier 3, students who are persistently violent and disruptive, and how many more are manageable in Tier 1 and 2, Tier 2 cases. I'd like to, this afternoon, thank you for your time. I'd like to thank you for your commitment to making decisions that consider not only discipline, but also dignity and growth and positive long-term outcomes for all students. Since I have 13 seconds left, Mr. Evans, I'd like to thank the Policy Committee for reconsidering the policy on public speaking. We still have some questions, but we'll be corresponding with you about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stennerston. Mary Haringa? Did I say that right?
Good afternoon, Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Savine, and the board. Carol Mauin couldn't be here today. She's on a well-deserved vacation, and so she asked me to deliver her comments on her behalf. WCTA's leaders share many priorities of this board: safe schools, supportive and effective discipline, quality teaching materials, and adequate staffing. WCTA members are WCPS employees. We are not at odds with those who work in the best interest of our students. WCTA leaders agree with you regarding the need for improved discipline and consequences for disruptive behavior. However, we cannot discipline students out of disruptive behaviors with three strikes and you're out responses, or consequences that do not consider age, maturity level, and other significant factors. WCTA members also agree that returning students to classrooms without, without support or an appropriate consequence is not acceptable. Unfortunately, support is costly and requires more paraprofessionals and behavioral support, and additional teachers in classrooms for alternative locations. The current budget does not provide for these needs. At the June 4 Policy Committee meeting, Mr. Evans and Mr. Burkett discussed Board Policy JK Student Discipline. As you deliberate the policy and review accompanying regulations and exhibit, I urge you to rely on the recommendations of experts that address the root causes of current classroom realities. I also ask, ask you to become mindful regarding the language used to describe the educational environment. Educators differentiate between students who receive special education services under IDEA as compared to students in general education classes. However, when you say that a disruptive student cannot be returned to the general population, the sentiment could be construed to allude to prisons, and that comparison is not one that should be considered appropriate. Since 2023, experts note that teachers also need more support to address higher levels of classroom stress. In an ASCD article titled "Dysregulated Students Need Regulated Adults," Nina Wisely notes that, quote, "To reduce challenging student behaviors, our approach must include the tools, structures, systems, and supports teachers need to stay regulated." I recommend this article to you as it includes relevant national statistics, as well as a number of recommendations for system-wide responses. In terms of other policies discussed at the June 4 Policy Committee meeting, please consider the following feedback. For Policy KD, public comment, I support the four-minute limit and the sign up prior to the beginning of public comment. Please also consider my previously provided emails and comments regarding Policy KD. As you consider Policy JFCA, Student Dress Code, please seek more input into discussions related to students wearing hats. Hats are a flashpoint for many secondary students. While teaching a respectful expectation to remove hats in buildings used to be the norm, that's not the expectation of many families in the 21st century. For some students, the wearing of a hat is considered a right, and in some cases, the hat makes a student even more identifiable on a security camera. Please be sure to seek feedback from representative groups of administrators and teachers as you consider this change. And finally, in review of proposed changes to Policy IKE, Promotion, Acceleration, and Retention of Students, I ask that you convene a representative group of parents and educators if significant changes are forthcoming. WCTA's leaders seek to collaborate with Dr. Savine and this board to provide improved educational experiences and outcomes for all of our students. Thank you for your consideration of these comments.
Good afternoon. President Zentmeyer, Dr. Savine, and board members, thank you for allowing us the chance to speak with you today. My name is Kristy Gross. I'm a veteran public school teacher, and I'm very proud of the work my fellow educators and I do with our students. I'm also an active member of WCTA, and I am equally proud of the work we do through our association, which seeks to advocate for the best possible working conditions for teachers so that we are able to deliver the best possible education to our students. Part of my work with WCTA involves, excuse me, includes serving on various committees, several of which meet directly with central office leadership. The spirit of collaboration and mutual respect shared between our organizations has been refreshing and welcomed, and I recognize it is not always the norm between other school districts and their teachers' associations. As a member of the WCTA Board of Directors, I would love to invite you, our elected Board of Education members, to continue forging these same strong partnerships by joining WCTA for some collegial conversations where we can shed light on what our members are feeling, needing, questioning, and celebrating. I would also love to invite you to stop in and make more personal visits to all of our schools. That way, you can see things taking place. You can also get to know our county's dedicated educators, staff, and students in real time, and see firsthand the good, the bad, and yes, sometimes the ugly, and then be further informed on exactly what happens in our schools. This will, I hope, promote collaboration with parents, with WCTA, with CES, and with community stakeholders to devise policies which are truly reflective of what is best for everyone involved. I'm sure you're all familiar with President Lincoln's famous statement that a house divided cannot stand. So my hope is that we can bring together you, our elected board, along with our CES leadership and WCTA to build the strongest house we can. We welcome your thoughts and hope you will also be willing to listen to our perspectives. And I know I speak for my fellow WCTA board members in saying, we hope and look forward to a strong and successful partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're moving right on to board member response to public comment. Do we have any comments?
I think you have another person that wanted to speak.
Sorry, Bud. You need to raise your hand a little bit faster. Go ahead, L.
Good evening, I'm Ethan Lowen. When it comes to the behaviors which are being discussed this evening in the policy, it's interesting when the, when the teachers' union speaks about the continuation, the multi-decade-long continuation of essentially what's called restorative practices. That's, that's what was being mentioned by earlier speakers. And this is something that began 30 years ago. It began 30 years ago, began in places like Baltimore, New York City, et cetera, and it's always had the same effect for decades and now generations, where everywhere that these are put in place, academics plummet, violence jumps, teachers become more at risk. And for years, parents and teachers have been coming to this board with tears in their eyes, talking about how they are watching their children or their students literally lose their childhoods because they, of the violence, the fear, the lack of academic achievement, and then the teachers' union comes up and says, oh, we need more of it. This has been going on for 30 years. It's actually an act of cruelty. It's cruel to do this. And there's really only one actual effect that anyone can see, which is that it creates an excuse to improve the budget, because what you have to do, or to improve, expand the budget, because what you have to do is you need, what is the teachers' union always says, you need more personnel. Now, you didn't need the personnel before these policies were put in place, and violence was not an issue, and academic performance was high. Remember, it wasn't all that long ago that we weren't in the bottom 50% nationally for academic performance, we were in the top 25%. That was only like 10 years ago, right? So the thing is, is that that's all it does, is it causes a massive increase in the budget. The budget, these increases, which is called the blueprint, it's a package of laws for these increases, called the blueprint. The governor himself called it a budget crisis. We're literally bankrupting our state. We lost and had our credit score downgraded just a month ago because of this, because of the cost of these policies that damage children, endanger staff, and, and take away our society's future. And we're now losing, losing our, our ability to even function financially. And, but the question, of course, is why don't they work? Now, everyone basically has, who is aware of it, has common sense answers why, but the majority of people aren't aware, right? I mean, they basically hide basic things through academic terminology such as restorative therapies. There's nothing academic about it. All, it takes away discipline, that's what it does. It takes away discipline. There are no consequences. So what ends up happening is that you are essentially trying to convince a child to want to behave. That's what it is. You, you can't say no. You can't tell a child, hey, stop rolling around on the floor, come here, sit in the circle. I use that as a specific example because a parent told me once that she literally withdrew her child from school because she was so concerned about the fact that, that the teachers in school wouldn't even tell him, hey, stop acting like that. He, they, she was concerned what he was going to grow up to be like. He didn't have problems, she was just concerned about his future. She had raised four other sons that were older. She's like, my son actually needs to be told no. And when you don't do that, what you do is you, you create a situation where the child's brain doesn't develop properly, right? It's actually, there's a very specific portion, it's well-known, it's the insula, that's the name of it, the insula. The insula needs to develop in order to have self-control, in order to have patience, right? How does the insula develop? It develops through order, structure, discipline. So when you deny that to a child, you're literally denying children their actual physical development. That's what this is. So why, decade after decade, are we continuing to do something that we know has failed miserably, horrifically, tragically? that we know has failed miserably, horrifically, tragically, right? And yet still, the Teachers Union comes up and says, "More, more, more." No, we need mercy. We need to do, we need to care about these children. We need to care about the staff. We need to do what is common sense. We need to do what has worked for not just generations, but centuries, millennia. This has always been the case up until 30 years ago. So I want to thank the board, you know, many new members that the community put in place specifically. It was a total 100% mandate. It was, the election could not have been more clear what the community wants this school board to do. And so I want to thank this school board for doing it. And I want to tell the Teachers Union, "You have to end the cruelty. Your futures are being affected by this as well." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowen. Okay, now we'll move into Board Member Response to Public Comment. Does anyone have any responses? Go ahead, Ms., go ahead, Mr. Burkett.
I would just say that if you were sitting in my seat and you were getting the emails and the phone calls from parents, from teachers about the behavior issues that are happening in our schools. And an example I used during that meeting was that we are hearing that time and time again, there's a disruptive child out of a group of 20 to 25 children who starts going off, throwing stuff, and they clear the whole classroom to take care of that one student. Instead of going in and just removing that one student, they cause 20 to 25 other kids more trauma. And then they take them to the principal's office, and they've returned them within a half hour to an hour. And so what does that say to the other kids that are left in that classroom? And some being left scared to death to continue to sit in that classroom with that child? Nobody is suggesting that you remove that kid and just put them by themselves and pay no attention to them. I don't think any of us up here are that uncaring that we don't want to see these kids. I do foster care because I want to help children do better. I want to see them succeed as an adult. But the way that it's been done for the last 15 years, to me, is not working. And I agree with what was just said. I think that more, the majority of people in Washington County, they want to see action. They want to see something changed. I've seen, I've seen stuff that's been sent to me by teachers and by other people that just, I don't understand it. And when I say three strikes, you're out, first of all, it would sit in the context of the extreme behaviors that we see. Hitting, bullying, smoking, maybe not even smoking, but those extreme behaviors of bullying, physical aggression. And that doesn't mean three strikes and you're out of the school system. You just need to do something different, at least for a while, until you get that behavior under control and then maybe bring them back. So to use my comment of three strikes, you're out, I believe in the way it was used is out of context, and so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Board members, remember you have three minutes to respond. Mr. Gessler?
So I'll just say that, Mrs. Stennerston, I do think that you should go back to the stakeholder and maybe clarify because I think what was discussed in that meeting was very much misrepresented to you. Actually, that was brought up in the meeting that, because there were staff members in the meeting that thought that we were talking about having a more punitive approach. And I actually clarified it and said, "I'm not necessarily saying be more punitive in the sense that you slap the kid on the wrist, suspend him, whatever." What I specifically said was that you need to provide that kid the education that the kid deserves in a different setting until we can get that behavior under control. And I don't see why any of that would be controversial or something that anyone would disagree with. So I would recommend you go back to the stakeholder. Maybe she didn't understand what was discussed or whatever because a lot of people don't realize, I taught, when I taught for 10 years, I taught students with emotional disabilities. I was a special ed teacher, and I taught the kids that had the profound behavioral problems that many people discuss. And I realize that you can't just go and suspend a kid and expect them to come back the next day and expect that behavior to go away. And I'll end it with this, and what the direction was to staff was to realign that behavior matrix that we use for student discipline ladder and make it fit the needs of the times. Because while it has been changed frequently over the years, the backbone of it is still very similar to what it was, and we need to rethink the way we approach discipline. And so I don't think that that's something that you or anyone else would disagree with. We need to be more collaborative, like you said, and we need to go and make sure that we are working with these disciplines. But I think what you were told was very much misrepresentative of what I said.
Any other comments to the public?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and giving us your opinion because it always counts to hear. It always matters to hear what the public is thinking. I also want to say that with this discipline that we're talking about, I hope we work within the parameters of MSDE and within the parameters of the state because they have rules, they have regulations that we have to follow. And so let's try to keep it within that scope.
Any more responses to public comment? Any more comments? All right, Dr. Savine, you're up.
Yes, thank you, President Zentmeyer, members of the board. It's my pleasure to invite forward for recognition Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee Dr. Brunson. And I believe we have other members of the CCAC Committee coming forward to recognize the talent that exists in Washington County Public Schools. Dr. Brunson.
Good evening, President Zentmeyer, members of the board, and Dr. Savine. As the Director of Special Education for Washington County Public Schools alongside Ms. Colleen Ailing, Special Education Specialist, who also serves as the CCAC Secretary, we are both honored to stand before you tonight. We are here to proudly celebrate and recognize outstanding professionals who have demonstrated exceptional dedication to supporting students with disabilities along with their families. Throughout this school year, among the various initiatives we undertook, the CCAC Awards have garnered enthusiasm. This year's awards saw an impressive turnout. We received 99 nominations from 43 dedicated nominators, leading to 38 nominees who were willing to be considered for recognition. Through a rigorous selection process, we narrowed down these nominees to five exceptional winners, each representing excellence in their respective awards categories. It is with great pride that we announce the recipients of these awards tonight. First, we have Case Manager of the Year, Ms. Sabrina Show from Springfield Middle School. Mrs. Show has served the students of Washington County Public Schools for 11 years. She has taken on many roles, even serving as a middle school English Language Arts teacher prior to serving in the role as Case Manager for Springfield Middle School for the last two years. She is proud to work at Springfield Middle School and is deeply valued, she values the community and the dedicated staff that she has the pleasure of working with every day. Congratulations. Next, we have Service Provider of the Year, Callie Coriel-Lapierre from Rockland Woods Elementary School. Ms. Callie Coriel-Lapierre has been a speech-language pathologist for 21 years. Her passion lies in helping children find their voice, whether through sign language, pictures, or spoken words. She's devoted to unlocking communication with her whole heart, believing it's her life's calling. Congratulations, Callie. Next, we have Paraprofessional of the Year, Ms. Tammy Lynn Thomas from Boyd de Michael Technical High School. Tammy began her WCPS career in 1979 and has served as a dedicated special education paraprofessional for over 30 years across multiple schools. A proud collector of smiley emojis, she brings joy and heart to her work every day. Her passion lies in nurturing students' independence and growth, and she believes the students have taught her just as much as she's taught them. Her career is guided by faith, love, and the belief that even a small smile can last a lifetime. Congratulations, Tammy. Next, we have Teacher of the Year, Ms. Becky Straw from E. Russell Hicks Middle School. Starting as a one-to-one adult para in 2009, she quickly proved her dedication to special education and became a permanent paraprofessional in 2010. She served in life skills programs across several schools before transitioning to a teacher and case manager role in 2018. With dual degrees, two masters, and worked toward National Board Certification, she's also contributed to curriculum development and coached Unified Sports, continually shaping inclusive education at every level. Congratulations to you, Becky. Last but certainly not least, we have Ms. Helen Hefner, Friend to Special Education, and that is the award that she's received. She is our Supervisor of Counseling Services. She's been with WCPS for 26 years, and this is her sixth year in the current role. With degrees in Psychology, Law, and Society and Counseling, along with national certifications and an administrative credential, she brings deep expertise to her role. A dedicated school counselor, she leads and attends trainings to support students, staff, and the evolving needs of the school community. She values collaboration, believes every student deserves to be heard and supported, and is committed to helping each one grow into their best self. No comparisons, just compassion and purpose. Thank you, Helen. In closing, we extend our heartfelt gratitude to the Board, Dr. Savine, Dr. Webster, and all central office leadership, as well as the devoted school-based staff, parents, and guardians who have actively participated in supporting CCAC events throughout this school year. We also thank Mr. Nichols, CCAC Chair, who has served in this role for the past two years. Ms. Crowe here, current CCAC Co-Chair, Ms. Ailing, CCAC Secretary, for giving your time and talent to lead CCAC with the support of the Department of Special Education. Your ongoing commitment and collaboration have been instrumental in advancing the cause of special education within our community. Here's to a restful summer break for everyone, and we eagerly anticipate another successful year ahead. Thank you.
Dr. Brunson, I just want to extend my gratitude to you for your leadership as Director of Special Education and to all of our special educators that were recognized tonight for their just exceptional service to our students. I just want to extend my extreme gratitude. So thank you for what you do and to all of our special educators across WCPS. Thank you. Next this evening, I wanted to provide an update regarding a presentation I recently shared with the Maryland State Board of Education. I was invited to speak as the incoming president of the Public Schools Superintendent's Association of Maryland. The state board has been gracious enough to provide time for school systems to highlight some of their successful initiatives and programs. I chose to feature our Reading Tutor Apprenticeship Program. I shared details about the structure as a Grow Your Own initiative, the positive data we've seen with our young readers, and also included the video with three of our reading tutors speaking to the level of impact the program has had on them personally. You see them posted here. Took the opportunity to express my appreciation for this board for expanding the program in the year ahead, allocating additional funding to have high school reading and math tutors for our elementary students. Felt the presentation was very well-received by the state board members. With the school year behind us, I would like to take a moment to share a few successes WCPS has achieved as a community that reflect the strong momentum we've built this year. First, our apprenticeships. We've seen continued growth in our student apprenticeship opportunities. 119 of our students participated in hands-on, real-world experiences in career fields that interest them. These programs are an important way for WCPS to stay responsive to the needs of our local workforce, helping students prepare for success while strengthening the community at the same time. I want to extend my gratitude to the Chamber of Commerce and our local business partners. Their ongoing support is key to making these opportunities possible for our students, so thank you. Turning to dual enrollment. Our partnership with Hagerstown Community College continues to expand. We've doubled student participation in dual enrollment courses. This gives students a leading edge, whether they're heading into college, the workforce, or military service. Families also benefit from early college credit at no cost, and students gain confidence in completing rigorous college-level courses. Finally, an update on our strategic plan. We've now completed the first full year of implementation, and the board has received two detailed updates this year, and we've made improvements to the public-facing dashboard on our website, including more user-friendly language and clear indicators of progress. Once the Maryland State Department of Education releases updated accountability information later this summer, I'll bring back another comprehensive update to the board this fall. In closing, I'd like to thank our students, our staff, families, and Washington County community at large for supporting the progress we're making in our schools. I'm looking forward to building on this momentum, knowing there is more we can accomplish in the year ahead. It's an honor to be included in the celebrations for our graduates each year, and I thank the board members for their participation and their role in honoring our graduates, and I wish the class of 2025 the very best in their pursuits after graduation. I'll conclude my report, President Zentmeyer, members of the board, with our graduation video celebration.
By now, I'm sure many of you have had enough of school. You're ready for your name to be called and to walk across the stage to leave it all behind. But I'm sure many of you had a moment of realization in your last few days as a student where you thought, "Maybe it wasn't so bad." While we prayed for the antico, I think we secretly cherished our last few days together.
The class of 2025 is a collection of highly motivated, intelligent, admirable, and impactful individuals who will achieve many accomplishments through going to college, trade school, military, or straight into the workforce.
I affirm that these students have completed an approved program of studies and met all graduation requirements.
As member and representative of the Washington County Board of Education, I recognize that these students have earned all the rights, privileges, and honors associated with a Maryland high school diploma. Therefore, I declare these students are eligible to receive their diplomas.
High school isn't about the grades.
High school isn't about the grades or the assignments. It's about the relationships we made with each other and the change we made in our community.
The relationships that we have within our class extend far beyond the classroom, and lifelong friendships have been created. We have persevered, excelled, overcame expectations, and defied all odds throughout our educational endeavors. Graduates, do not forget who you are and where you came from, no matter where you may end up in life.
It is my honor to ask you to move your tassels from the right to the left.
Felicidades a todos!
Last is missed!
President Zentmeyer, members of the board, I want to take this opportunity to thank our students, parents, staff, community members, business leaders, this community, and this board for a highly successful year. Thank you. That concludes my report.
It doesn't get any better than that. This meeting is adjourned.
No board comments?
We did that before. We had the public comments and then went to board comments.
Go ahead, Linda.
Well, I just wanted to say that on May 14th, how you and I went to the years of service recognition, and we got to see people get their pins. And then we were able to go to the retirement dinner and celebrate our retirees. On May 21st, I got to be the person who officiated for the first class of the graduates of the innovated ed program, which was very exciting. On May 28th, I was a guest at the Marshall Street School JDP graduation, and that was just fantastic. Those kids are electric. And I just want to say, it was great. I congratulate all the retirees, but the one I want to give a shout out to is Dave Spreaker. He's retiring from Marshall Street JDP. He has done a fantastic job. The staff and the kids love him. He is like their grandfather, and they're going to miss him greatly. So, congratulations to everybody and hope you have a good time in your retirement.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? This meeting is really adjourned.